Our meeting is called order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Mayor Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Please stand in the vacation. Remain standing for the press tonight given by Vice Mayor Dr. Gary Miller.
Let us pray. Lord God, we come to you in prayer, in reverence, in supplication. We ask for your help, your guidance, your patience. As we struggle to help guide our city forward through all the pitfalls, the ups and downs, the good times and the bad, we ask you to bless the citizens of this city, this county, this region, this state. Help keep them safe and warm from the natural disasters that seem so prevalent in this time. And let us always remember to help the suffering, the less fortunate, the weak. For they too are our fellow man. They are our friends. They are our family. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. While I'm standing, I do have a special recognition tonight. I'd like to ask Mr. Mark McFadden and Mr. Ken Gillie if they will come forward. Mr. McFadden is the safety program coordinator at Danville Community College for motorcycle training, and so is Mr. Ken Gillie. Work with him as well. Both are licensed by the state. Like to read the proclamation. Whereas scooters and motorcycles use comparatively less fuel, cause less pollution, and have less harmful impact on our infrastructure. And whereas scooters and motorcycles require only a fraction of space taken by other vehicles to park, thereby addressing an ongoing shortage in our city. And whereas the price of fossil fuels is growing and supply is diminishing. And whereas the use of fossil fuels continues to damage our health by adding to pollution and risking our future through global warming. And whereas our infrastructure repairs fail to keep pace with this degradation. And whereas for these reasons, scooters and motorcycles offer a form of daily transportation to be encouraged. Now therefore, I Sherman and Saunders, Mayor of City of Danville, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 15, 2015 as Ride to Work Day. As Ride to Work Day. And encourage scooter and motorcycle riders to ride to work on that day in an effort to highlight the positive daily use of scooters and motorcycles. Given under my hand, the second day of June, 2015, Sherman and Saunders Mayor. And I present this proudly, sir. And please have some remarks. Thank you so very much. And thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Your remarks, please.
On behalf of the two and three wheel riders and in remembrance of Rocket Roger, one of our businessmen for the city of Danville that worked on 097 choppers, we'd like to say thank you for proclaiming June 3, Monday, June 2015 as recognizing it Ride to Work Day. And on behalf of the motorcycle instructors at Danville Community College, we'd like for everybody to get licensed, get educated, and don't forget to ride those two and three wheel motorcycles. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that in Danville, we have a lot of riders in our city. And a number of our city employees ride as well, across all departments. Our police chief, Chief Broadfoot, he's ridden cross-country California. Our city manager used to ride his motorcycle for daily transportation, and others. So I'm wondering if we can think about maybe getting all of the riders in Danville simply doing a proclamation to maybe one day after work, Mr. King, after work, meet somewhere down at City Hall, you know, and just show the value, the pride, and motorcycles, and what the city of Danville is doing. Speaking of city of Danville, are we aware whether any other cities in Virginia are doing proclamations as we are, like tonight?
We don't believe that other cities in Virginia are doing the proclamation. We've checked the national database, and as far as we know, we've supported this now for five years. We believe we are the only city in Virginia who is doing this.
So we're doing something special in Danville?
We believe so.
What do you think, Mr. Buckner?
Certainly, I'm in it, sir.
Let's kick the idea around and maybe arrange a day after work when the city employees who ride could meet at City Hall one day, just for a little conversation, maybe a photo op. And we invite anyone else who wants to join us. So we'll try to work on that, and then publicize it so people know what's going on. But in event to have city employees after work on their own time without pay.
But do ride to work.
After work, yes, sir. But ride to work. Ride to work. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Under communication, anyone who wishes to speak on matters not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on general items, will be heard and analyzed and considered. I know tonight we have people from the River District Association. Would like to invite you to come up to make a presentation if you like. Welcome, sir. And your name, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Farrar with Treasure with the River District Association. We're pleased to meet with City Council tonight. We've got a member of our Board of Directors filling the rows here tonight.
If you have to stand, please. Your board members to stand. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate that.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce our new executive director. Arneisha Coles is a native of Chatham, Virginia. She was educated in Chatham and University of Virginia for her bachelor's degree. She spent the last 20 years working in community development in St. Louis. And the River District Association feels we are extremely fortunate to have landed her to be our executive director. So I want to introduce her and now let her say a few words to council. Arneisha.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. King, Mr. Larkin, and other council-appointed officers, I am pleased to stand here today as the executive director of the River District Association. On behalf of the River District Association's Board of Directors, I express our sincere thanks for the city's $50,000 annual grant to fund our operations for three years. I also take this opportunity to acknowledge the Danville Regional Foundation for its three-year commitment to provide a total of $300,000 to our organization. It is with your funding that we are able to move forward in our service to the city of Danville. Most people know us as the Downtown Danville Association, and that was our name when we started back in 1999. Over a 10-year period, we accomplished great things under that name, including becoming a Virginia Main Street community partner, which led to a facade improvement program and two murals highlighting some of Danville's history. Today, after completing a strategic plan made possible by the Danville Regional Foundation and our staff, we are happy to report that we are ready to embark on a new and exciting chapter in our story. We have embraced the city's rebranding of this community by changing our name to the River District Association and by adopting the area's logo, as well as expanding our service area to reach beyond downtown's Main Street to include portions of the historic tobacco warehouse district, the Old West End neighborhood, and the area just north of Dan River. We view the River District as the heart of Danville's universe. It is the seat of Danville's history and its future. Believing this, we are committed to planning programs and activities that position Danville to be re-designated as a Virginia Main Street community, that support business startup as well as retention, and that make the public aware of the unique products and services available here. We want the River District to be the first place that comes to mind when people are looking for a place to live, a place to eat or shop, and a place to go when they need a service. And we look forward to working more closely with the Office of Economic Development and the Department of Community Development toward our common goals. Since I started on April 16, the Danville Museum of Fine Arts and History has graciously housed our organization until our permanent space at 442 Main Street is completed later this summer. We look forward to moving in and being a visible and accessible resource to River District businesses, residents, and visitors. In the meantime, I'd like to announce a few projects that we are currently working on. First, in recognition of Business Appreciation Week, we joined the Office of Economic Development and the Danville Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce in organizing our second River District Scavenger Hunt. This is a free and fun event that will take place in downtown Danville this Thursday, June 4, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., rain or shine. We invite you and the public to attend this event. And who knows, maybe one of our city council members will win our $500 grand prize. Next Tuesday, June 9, we will restart group meetings with area merchants to encourage networking, cooperation, and collaboration among area businesses. We hope that more cross-promotional activities will result from these gatherings. In addition, we look forward to reviving the association's Historic Murals Program. Our next mural will have a tobacco theme, recalling Danville's economic history. We are exploring locations and perhaps a new medium for this special mural. And now that the association has reorganized as the River District Association as full-time staff and working committees, and has received generous multi-year support from the city of Danville and the Danville Regional Foundation, we look forward to the positive lasting changes that will result. Throughout the year, we'll make sure that the city council and the public are aware of our activities planned. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome. Anyone else which to speak on any matters not on the agenda? Thank you. Has the motion approved our amendment from May 5, 2015? Mr. Campbell makes the motion. There's a second. Mr. Buckner, discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
We're adopting an ordinance to transfer funds from unreserved fund balance to restricted fund balance. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Gary Wito. I live at 110 Ginger Drive, Danville, Virginia. Members of Danville City Council, Danville City Manager and staff. I think there are two problems you are blending. One problem is the GW High School track that is in such bad condition that there have been no home track meets there in over three years. The other problem is the condition of everything else about the stadium. You are making available $1.5 million of Danville money to begin to study solving these two problems. I have three concerns. First, I fear the track restoration will be overshadowed and buried in the large project of the stadium renovation. I think the track's surface should be fixed so the GW High School can have home meets. I think it should have a much higher priority. I think this part can be done quickly and well ahead of the rest of the stadium renovation. Fixing the track brings immediate, important, and tangible results, home track meets. The rest of the stadium project should not delay the track repair. Second, I hope that the $50,000 feasibility study and the $100,000 preliminary engineering study will be done by Danville citizens. There is enough talent and experience in Danville to complete these studies. Lastly, I fear that the city stadium will be an underutilized outdoor civic center. Contrast this with the Riverwalk Trail that is used by many Danville citizens with every day with no admission fees. It was worth the cost of construction that has been going on for years and continues into the future. Will the other stadium renovations have the results that are as important, tangible, and worth its cost? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else which to speak? Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Council members, your pleasure. Mr. Gilstrap.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of an ordinance amended in the fiscal year 2015 Budget Appropriation Ordinance to provide for a transfer from the general fund's unreserved fund balance to the general fund's restricted fund balance in the amount of $1,500,000.
Give their second, Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, first, I apologize for not being here last meeting when this was discussed. I had a business meeting out of town I could not miss. But Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I agree that we need a study. I think $150,000 is way more than it'll take, but I think we need a study to be done. But I believe we're getting the cart before the horse on this. You know, we need to sit down, in my opinion, with an architect or another firm to really go over what our dreams are. You know, are we talking about a track, a stadium? Is it gonna be a GW? Is it not gonna be a GW? We need to sit down and really think about what our dreams are gonna be with an architect. We need to be very specific in what we want this facility to be and look like. We know there's a water problem on that track. We need to know exactly what that water problem is. What if that water problem is it makes you wanna, if we stay there at that location, that you gotta tilt that field, that means you gotta build a new stadium or major renovations. I can tell you from my experience, a track's $800,000 to $1 million. The track you'd wanna build, eight-lane track. Turf and lights, $1,900,000. I just did it. I'm telling you. And I did it pretty much as cheaply as you could do it with the best material. $1,900,000. A stadium, it's whatever you want it to be. It can be $2 million, $4 million, $10 million. Depends on what you want. As a salesperson all my life, you know, you gotta have something to sell. I mean, you can't go into a living room and just say, "I wanna build a track and a stadium." You gotta have something to sell. And so I believe you gotta have the study first, but you gotta tell people, tell an architect what our dreams are. Let them come back with renderings. Now you got something to sell. You know, if you wanted to go to, you know, we say this money goes to the side. We still don't spend it unless we come back and approve it, and maybe that'll help get other money. But what I'm saying is, any grant that I've ever gone for, they wanna know specifically, what does it look like? How much is it gonna cost? Where is it gonna be? What's your parking gonna be? I mean, when they put their hard-earned money into it, they wanna know these kind of things. So again, I think we've got the cart way before the horse on this, and I'll be voting no. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Further discussion of the motion? Further discussion. Mr. Gilstrap.
I wasn't going to counter in the beginning, but let me just simply say that in all due respect, the study is gonna show us exactly the information, the dream, if you will. The 1.55 million is simply earmarked. It's not appropriated to the stadium. It's earmarked for the stadium. I do know that grants need, if we're fortunate enough to have, when we get the plan done, and we're fortunate enough to know what our dream is and how much it costs, then we have monies to match. And hopefully, that 1.5 million could be used for at least a 50% match, if not triple or quadruple. And I know that that may not be enough. And let me simply conclude by saying, you can just as easily unearmark something as you do earmark it. It's earmarked for the stadium. If we see that whatever we would decide, we can, nine members of council can just as easily unearmark it. It's sitting in a fund of some 30-plus million dollars. We hold 20 million of that earmarked for rainy day project. Now we're going to hold 21.5 million with 1.5 for possible stadium expenditures. Nothing definite. We're not gonna spend any money. We simply want to have the architect, the engineers, and hopefully local engineers, guide us in the right direction. And then when we get that guidance, we can make the decision of what we want to do with that 1.5. We can unearmark it at that time if we wish. But anyway, it's still a council decision. This is, to me, showing in good faith that the council is serious about a city stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley.
I would also respectfully counter with, why earmark something and unearmark it? Why, leave the money over there. It's there. Number two is, who's sitting down with this, whoever's gonna do this study? We need to understand what we're gonna do, and we need to tell them what we're gonna do. We do, I just don't wanna know a study about the water. I want somebody to tell me, what's this complex gonna look like? This is what our dreams are. Now we got something concrete. Is that $7 million? Is it, I promise you, I'm telling you, the numbers I gave you are fact numbers. A track alone is $800,000 to $1 million. Period. Period. Very little site development to do that. So you, I just don't see, again, we are way ahead of ourselves. I think everybody on this council wants to do something, but I just think we're pulling way ahead the cart before the horse by having to mark something and earmark it or add to it. Until I know what it is, I don't wanna earmark any money. What happens in three weeks, a catastrophe comes through, and now you gotta go back and unearmark the money 'cause you need it for something. I just think, until we know what we got, what it's gonna cost us, then we can make good decisions about what we wanna do with the citizens' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogler.
And respectfully to my colleague, Councilman Rowley, and unless I've misunderstood it, and City Manager, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe what you're talking about, what the study should be and what it should do, is what the study will be. The way I understood it to be, it will give you a very detailed option A, option B, option C, option D, that will lay out specifically. And I assume there will be meeting? I mean, we haven't even gotten to that point yet, but once we pass the budget, which that's a part of, to have these meetings with us, with the community, about what the vision is, different visions and all of that, and that will be included in the study so that we're able to make that decision. I think in terms of the 1.5 million, it's we're planning ahead so that we know that this is something that's gonna have to be done, even if we just do the very basic improvements, as Councilman Rowley pointed out. I mean, it's gonna be expensive just to make that place usable, if that's just what we do. I know that, you know, that there's also talk about making this more than just fixing up a high school football stadium. To have a city stadium, a complex, the entire community can benefit from. Year-round multi-use facility. It's not just used for sports. And I did wanna correct something that I know there's been different media reports on it. They haven't had a full-fledged track meet at that site in over 15 years. So they haven't had one in this century, a full-fledged track meet. So that is, you know, something to keep in mind. So there's gonna need to be serious improvements. It's not just the track. The field condition, there's flooding in that field. The drainage is awful. The stands are literally sinking into the ground. So even if we chose to do the very limited amount, it's gonna be a certain amount of money. So I think what the idea is to say that the city is serious about doing this. We know that something is gonna have to be done. We'll get further along in the discussions about what it will look like and all of that, but other entities, other industries, people that may wanna be a part of this will know that this is something we're serious about. When the River District, when we got started on the River District, the city took the lead on it. The city got out in front of it, and then private investment followed. We've put in 25 million now over five years. There's been over $100 million in private investment. But we took the lead on it, and the private investment followed. I think if investors and people who are engaged and involved in the community see that we're serious about it, which this is the first step of doing, then they will do it. But look, I'm glad that council's having the discussion, and as Buddy said, we're all in agreement. Something's gotta be done, and I think we're just having some slight disagreement about the semantics about how we go about doing it. But I want the public to understand that this is something that we take serious and something that needs to be done, and we'll have discussions on various ways of doing it. But I'm glad that we're having the discussion, and I think that this is a good first step. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We, I appreciate this discussion, and we talked about it in work session, and we are in discussion, and council members certainly bore us in their opinion. I'd like to call on Mr. Campbell, Mr. Rowley, Mr. Gilstrap, and then I would like to call for the vote, if council is okay with that. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Vice Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my fellow councilman, Betty Rowley, we both played George Washington football many moons ago. You were on first string. I was on last string, but we played. But the field is terrible. I mean, I would agree with Councilman Vogler. The $150,000 is to do a study. We love our community. This is a part of economic development. We have to move forward on this initiative. I've talked with many citizens about this. I haven't heard anyone not say that something needs to be done to it. And it's a disturbing factor when we have home football games, and we go out to see the condition of the field. I just can't accept it. I can't accept it. We have to be proactive as much as possible to make something happen in reference to the stadium. And I think that, my personal opinion, I will be voting for it. And I think that we should do what we can as council people to satisfy the demand of the majority of our community to be proactive in reference to the stadium. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley, Mr. Gilstrap, and Vice Mayor Miller.
But this will be my last word, Mr. Mayor. I don't, you know, if this was my business, you say option one, two, three, or four, well, that ain't telling me anything. I mean, do they know what we want? I mean, how are they gonna give us options when they don't know what we even want? You know, I think we do a study, before even a study, we sit down as a group. we sit down as a group, whoever the group is, what are the dreams? What do you want? And you let somebody come back and say, okay, here's option one, two, three, and four, then you, then you know what you're doing, then you can make good decisions. The money's there, and then you appropriate, uh, the money. That, that's all I'm saying. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Uh, Mr. Rowley, I think that's what the study is intended to do. I think the study is intended to answer your questions.
Right, and, and once that study's finished, then I'm ready to-
And that money's in the budget.
I'm ready to add then, yeah.
This money here is in, um, uh, earmarked as we have a whole list of capital improvements that are earmarked for certain projects. Many of those projects don't know the exact cost. They know approximate cost, but they're all in the capital improvements party earmarked for drainage corrections, earmarked for, um, water line improvements, and they're all earmarked for a certain project. I don't see this any different. We know already that if we do nothing but correct the problem at the track and the football field, it's three million dollars.
How do you know that? How do you know that?
Well, we, we know that from the study that was done previously-
When?
And they presented it to you, right here in the City Council.
Yeah, when?
When, three years ago.
You have the floor.
You don't have any current information?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, please.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Gilstrap, you have the floor.
I'm concluding. We know this is gonna cost more than 1.5 million, whatever we do. But we at least have some money for leverage for possible, uh, resources of other funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think the stadium and the track and the football field are an embarrassment to our city. We, when we were trying to renovate the River District, we had embarrassments downtown. We had the downtowner. We had different buildings. So the city led the way and, and, and put forth money to do this, and, and then contributions and donations started coming in, people to help us out. And, and that's why it worked there. I think the same thing applies here. The stadium is an embarrassment, the track field is an embarrassment. Uh, it's seven lanes. Even if we surfaced all seven lanes, if somebody set a state record, it would be disallowed 'cause it's not a regulation eight-lane track. So, you know, it's gonna take a major input here. Uh, but I see this as, this 1.5 million as a seed money, showing the council's determination to do something about the problem. And hopefully, this'll draw in contributions and, uh, donations, and maybe somebody wants to donate a brand-new scoreboard. If they see the city's serious, they'll get serious. Maybe somebody wants to donate a track, uh, you know. We'll name the track field after them, whatever it takes. But we, we have to put some skin in the game, our skin in the game, and then, and the city's gonna have to do that. The citizens are gonna have to do that. It may take a bond issue before we can get enough money. But we need to rally the whole city behind this, and I, I think the way we start is, we start and put our money in, and then see what follows. Thank you.
Thank you. The money is being set aside for this purpose. It is the understanding of council, according to my understanding. No funds will be spent without having a plan. We must have a plan to commit the money. So put the money aside. It's saying, it's not saying we're ready to spend it. On condition, we have, we must have a plan, and then we decide to move forward. That's my understanding of the, uh, of the motion, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Department of the Department of the Board of the Commission, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with your, uh, permission, I would like to just go down the list and read them all, and we vote on them as a group. Is that okay? There's a lot. Be patient. Uh, I would like to propose a resolution reappointing Eugene Jackson as a member of the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing John C. Lippert as a member of the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing L. Hampton Wilkins, Wilkins, as a member of the Airport Commission. A resolution appointing Jesse L. Barksdale as a member of the Airport Commission. A resolution reappointing Christopher Wiles as a member of the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program. A resolution appointing Telly Tucker as a member of the Danville Community College Board of Trustees. A resolution reappointing Tammy Warren as a member of the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. A resolution appointing Cynthia Pruitt-Rodes as a member of the Danville Community Policy and Management Team. A resolution reappointing R.J. Lackey as a member of the Danville Development Council. A resolution reappointing Shelby Erby as a member of the Danville Pennsylvania Community Services Board. A resolution reappointing James K. Turpin as a member of the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution reappointing William Donahue as a member of the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution reappointing Fred O'Shanks III as a member of the Danville Utility Commission. A resolution appointing Charles Majors as a member of the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research Board. A resolution reappointing Brian Finney as a member of the Social Service Advisory Board. A resolution reappointing Judy P. Cassie as a member of the Transportation Authority Board. A resolution reappointing Ralph Price as a member of the Transportation Advisory Board. And I'd like to thank my co-members on the Appointments Committee, Alonzo Jones and Reverend Campbell. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there a second? Everybody. Uh, Mr. Shanks, discussion of the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
We adopt an ordinance to appropriate fund for the Recreation and Enrichment Program and the Expanded Summer Program. Is there a motion, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget approche, appropriation ordinance to provide for funds in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for Recreation and Enrichment Program, and the local in-kind share of a one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for a total appropriation of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, forty-one dollars, and appropriating the same.
Is there a second, Mr. Buckner? Discussion of the motion? First reading. Consideration of adopting ordinance to abandon a remnant of Delmar Drive. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Closed public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor moves forward and orders vacating zero point one five acre of surplus right-of-way on Delmar Drive.
Okay, the second, uh, Mr. Rowley. Discussion of the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance to appropriate funds from Danville IDA to the city for repayment of a grant to the commission. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Uh, Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance to provide a transfer from industrial development to the, uh, authority to the general fund for unexpended grant funds received from the Virginia Tobacco Indemnification and Community Revalidation Commission for Allergies Incorporated, and to be repaid to the commission for noncompliance of their performance agreement in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, and appropriating the same.
Is that your second, Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion? First reading. Consideration of adopting an ordinance to award grant funds to city sheriffs. Counsel, your pleasure. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for revenues from the Virginia Office of the Attorney General, uh, asset forfeiture funds in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of purchasing various equipment in this, for the city jail and courthouse, and appropriating the same.
Okay, there's a second, Mr. Vogler. Discussion of the motion? Discussion of the motion? First reading. I see our sheriff is here tonight, and, uh, if you notice, we didn't have any question. I mean, how do you argue with getting money, right, when it's free? Okay, all right. Consideration of adopting, uh, an ordinance to designating city council as responsible for setting park recreation fees. Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, we adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining section 25 dash 3 entitled Use of Parks and Recreational Facilities and Equipment of Chapter 25 entitled Parks and Recreation of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six as amended.
Okay, there's a second, Mr. Vogler, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion? Uh, Mr. Shanks?
Yes, Mayor, I, uh, I totally understand the concerns that have been raised by other council members in bringing this up, and I understand the purpose. I believe, though, that it's gonna be overly burdensome for, uh, for the fees to be totally regulated by city council. And although I agree with what's trying to be accomplished, I think there could've been a, a solution where council was more active in providing input. So, you know, the end result is, because of this, some things are gonna change, and some things already have changed. But I think we, uh, we're gonna make it a little burdensome, burdensome for our fees to be, uh, properly published and negotiated as times change during the seasons. So, that, I, that's why I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I agree. Uh, you know, I, I think it, it should be enough for the council. If we see some unfairness or, or problem with our fees, to, to go to the city manager and Parks and Recs and say, hey, you need to adjust this. I don't think we have to adjust the fees every time and approve each fee change. So I'll be voting against this as well. I, I think it, uh, the Parks and Recs fully capable of doing that. Uh, a few years ago, we told them, you know, you need to charge more, and we did this. We told them, you know, you need to pay for yourself, and they raised their fees. Well, they were in our direction, they raised their fees. Now we've told them, well, maybe your fees are too high. You need to cut those back, and they are doing so. So I think that's sufficient. I don't think we have to approve every single fee. So I'll be voting against this.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley.
I would, uh, agree with the comments that have already been done, but I also will say, we have a lot of assets. A lot of assets and facilities, and we just can't keep them idle. Something's wrong if people aren't renting them, uh, in my opinion. So we've gotta strike the right balance on what that is. But I don't know of us if, if we have to do all of that. Uh, so I understand both sides, but I'm gonna be voting no also. But we can't let our assets sit idle either. Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
I will be supporting the motion for this reason. To my knowledge, every fee in the city is approved by city council, except recreation. Now, I don't see that being that too burdensome adding one more to that long, long list. I don't think that we would agree as council to say, let the city manager approve the garbage collection fees. I don't think we would say that it was okay for the city manager to approve utility fees. I don't think we would say it's okay for the city manager to approve the cemetery fees. And that list goes on forever. And we, at one meeting, approve all those fees at one time. And we, nine council members have input on every one of those fees that we select to have input on. And of course, that whole fee schedule usually goes through in about ten minutes. Last year was an exception. Okay. On the last couple of years, there's been a section. But I don't see that this to be any different, um, uh, granting city council to approve all fees, not just all but one. And I don't think one would be that much more of a problem.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I kinda feel like, uh, Councilman Gilstrap, that, uh, we should, council should have that say-so, number one. I don't see it per se as council doing it by themselves. It is park, recreation, and council working together to make the decision. We make decisions on a lot of things. This should not be left out. The other issue is, we are elected officials. We hear from the citizens, and the citizens, uh, tell us how they feel about certain things. And we realize that park and recreation is a very important institution in our community. Uh, I have had experiences where I think that certain thing's out of proportion for the citizens. And, uh, recreation is important, very important. It should be at a price or a rental fee that is feasible with everyone, that it should not be difficult for them to use recreation within our community. So I, I would be voting yes on this decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, I, I support this, and I wanna preface what I'm about to say by saying that I think our Parks and Rec department does a great job. This, to me, is not about trying to undermine or criticize what they do. Um, as, as Councilman Campbell had said, this is about working alongside with them, and, and we are the elected officials, so we're the ones who are, are directly responsible and directly connected to the, to the public. And I mean, we hear a lot of these things, and, you know, just a personal example, I, you know, I've been playing in the rec softball league out there ever since I moved back home. So I've been hearing about these, these rental fees for several years now. And, and from the moment I got on council, every spring, summer, and fall, when I'm out there, they say, Lee, gosh, can't y'all do something about these rental fees? We'd love to have tournaments out here, but it's just, you know, we can't make it work financially. It's too much. We go down to Burlington, we go to, you know, wherever. And so, at the last meeting, yeah, we, we, we finally had a discussion on it. It, it, it took a few years, but we got it on the work session. And, you know, council had expressed we wanted to see those fees lowered for, for those particular things, and it happened. Uh, and I'm glad that it did. But I, to me, I look at this as just giving us a little more flexibility and the ability to act swiftly on some things, uh, that, that, you know, we may hear about, and we have the ability to do so. So I do support this. Um, but I su, support our Parks and Rec department. I think they do a great job. And like Buddy pointed out, we've got great assets and great, uh, facilities here that I wanna see us use more. Sports tourism is a, is a great industry in this country, and not just big cities. Small cities utilize this. Um, and we have the, the ability to do so also. I support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Miller?
No.
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Shanks?
No.
Mr. Vogler?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Five of six, Mr. Attorney. Five votes or six votes to pass?
Needed five, and it got six.
Okay. Thank you. Communication, Mr. Manager?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
And Madam Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Department of Economic Development for hosting a Meet Our Team event this evening. I'd also like to thank all the businesses that came out to support that. It was a great time. And, uh, also, I hope to see you all, uh, this Thursday night at the scavenger hunt downtown. Last year was excellent, and, uh, I hope you guys can make it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, um, would like to welcome once again, Ms. Coles, here as the director of the River District. We're glad to have you in the city, looking forward to you being effective in our community. And of course, as, uh, Mr. Buckner stated, that the business appreciation celebration downstairs was very nice, and we want to commend the Economic Development Department for what they are doing. The activities this week are great, and the citizens should get out and enjoy themselves. We have, we are a great city. Lots going on, and if a person says that they do not have anything to do, then I wonder what they want to do. And, uh, lastly, we'd like to wish Mr. Vogler a happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Yes, uh, my thanks to all the businesses in our community. Uh, they drive our community. And you want to show business appreciation, visit them. Spend some money with them. They would appreciate it, and the city would appreciate it. And, in conclusion, you ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Councilman Vogler. Happy birthday to you.
Let me recommend that all of you make the next rehearsal.
Ms. Coles, uh, you saw council tonight, your first meeting. It's, we have so much love for one another, so we wanna welcome you. Uh, but just again, welcome you so much to our River District Association. And again, Lee, happy birthday to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Welcome you here, uh, as one of, as the, one of the two liaisons from the council to the River District, uh, with Mr. Jones. We certainly welcome you here. Sorry it took you twenty years. You got lost for twenty years, but we're glad you're back. Look forward to working with you. Uh, the, and happy birthday, Vogler, as we've already said. Economic development's so important. Businesses that are already here produce three-fourths of the new jobs. You know, we're always trying to find that new business from outside, but we can't forget that businesses are already here. We can produce a lot more jobs by just expanding current businesses. Finally, uh, just wanna reflect on something. I lost a
They drive our community, and you want to show business appreciation, visit them, spend some money with them, they would appreciate it, and the city would appreciate it. And in conclusion, you ready? Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Councilman Vogler, happy birthday to you.
Let me recommend that all of you make the next rehearsal.
Mr. Jones?
Ms. Coles, you saw council tonight, your first meeting, we have so much love for one another, so we want to welcome you. But just again, welcome you so much to our River District Association, and again, Lee, happy birthday to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Welcome you here, as one of the two liaisons from the council to the River District, along with Mr. Jones, we certainly welcome you here. Sorry it took you 20 years, you got lost for 20 years, but we're glad you're back, look forward to working with you. And happy birthday, Vogler, as we've already said. Economic development's so important, businesses that are already here produce three-fourths of the new jobs, you know, we're always trying to find that new business from outside, but we can't forget that businesses are already here. We can produce a lot more jobs by just expanding current businesses. Finally, just want to reflect on something, I lost a dear friend this weekend, the wife of my college roommate, they've been married for 43 years, I'd known her for about 45. And then one of our family here up front has a relative that's seriously ill, so, you know, take time to talk to people, thank people for what they do, thank people that are around you every day, and take time to tell the people that love you that you love them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Ms. Coles, welcome, glad to hear, look forward to working with you. Lee, I think I've got ties older than you are, so, and for all council members, just know this, I love y'all guys, I really do, and isn't it wonderful to be able to be in a country that you can have debate and walk out of the room and be friends? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks?
Let's see, I just have a couple of things this evening. I missed the business reception prior to this meeting, and I regret that. As a business owner, I'm really proud to see city council and the Economic Development Department recognize local businesses which have been so often ignored and not supported by the city and by some of the citizens. So it's wonderful to see this effort by this council and this Economic Development Department to recognize local businesses, and I hope to see a lot more of that. And secondly, I'd just like to say, congratulations to the class of Art 15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I want to start off tonight, just make a note in congratulating Galileo on another achievement. If you hadn't heard, they were listed in the top 100 high schools in America for personal finance instruction, and Galileo was actually ranked 22nd in the country, and they're here in Danville, and, you know, a lot of our schools, all of our schools make us proud, and, you know, Galileo is certainly one of them, and they continue to be ranked in numerous categories as one of the best high schools in the country, so we're certainly proud of the work that they continue to do, the faculty, the staff, and the students. So congratulations again to them. Ernestia, thank you for being here tonight and welcome, and, you know, the River District continues to grow and thrive and make us all proud, and now you're going to be a big part of this where we move forward, and look forward to that. I just want to read real quick something from the latest National Association of Realtors magazine, and it talks about downtowns and walkable communities, and real quick, it just says, neighborhoods where people can live close to work, get their groceries, and grab a beer, all without needing a car, are the magnets that attract many of today's young professionals. Where they go, jobs follow. And so that's what we're doing in the River District, and I think we're seeing the success